Good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock and it's time to call the meeting of the Whitehall City Council to order for February 17, 2015, for the purpose of considering such matters that may come before it. I'm going to ask everyone to please rise for a moment of silence and being taken to the pledge. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Turp, who's called the hall?
LaCourt.
President.
Morrison.
Eric.
Bailey.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Greg.
Here.
Coniston.
Here.
Canner.
Present.
And President Graham.
Present.
This is President. I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Canner to excuse the accident member. Mr. Turp, who's called the hall?
LaCourt.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Canner.
Yes.
The accident member has been excused. Next, we have our approval minutes for February 3, 2015, the agenda and regular meeting.
President Graham, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of February 3. Second?
I have a motion by Miss Coniston, second by Mr. Court for the approval of the February 3, 2015 minutes. Mr. Turp, who's called the hall?
LaCourt.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Canner.
Yes.
The minutes have been approved. It's our first opportunity for poll public. If anyone would like to address council, you step forward, state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes.
My name is Don Sarubi. I have residency both in Illinois and Ohio, my main residency being in Illinois. And I had a lovely drive back from Chicago this weekend in the snow that covered eighty, ninety. But I wanted to make sure I made this meeting because it's, you know, it's a goal mine to be more involved with this town and to see this issue through about panhandling. I brought two articles this week. One article talks about a woman who was, it was just published in the Columbus Dispatch about a woman who was raped under the East Side Bridge here. And she, according to the article, you know, is homeless and pretty much resides in the city limits of Whitehall. And it talks about the courageous things that she's done to make sure that the person who did this horrific crime to her was punished. She made it to court eleven different times over years to make sure that he did not walk free, and some of those times walking eight miles to get to the municipal county, Franklin County Municipal Courthouse. Other times, it says, she quotes, that she has had to panhandle here in Whitehall for bus fare. And if it wasn't for some of those generositys of people who panhandle, you know, give the panhandlers, she would never be able to, you know, get a bus ticket to get to downtown. So I'm just wanting to point out the fact, this is a story of a really sad case, and yet this lady, who is homeless, is not using the money that she gets from panhandling for drugs or alcohol. But the other issue I wanted to bring up really quickly here is, I found it interesting, someone from Whitehall came up to me and talked to me about how Whitehall is very high in crime, and I explained to him some of my runs with the Whitehall police just recently. But anyways, and this Home Security Shield organization, it rates all the top cities in Ohio, and the most dangerous, the highest crime rate in Ohio is actually Whitehall, which is kind of sad. You know, it's not just violent crimes, like a lot of other statistics go, but it goes on violent crimes, property crimes, you know, people-on-people crimes. So saying that, I'd like to just make mention of Officer Slosser, how his, why I think there's a lot of crime is because it seems like Officer Slosser and some of the other police officers here maybe pay attention to other things other than maybe the more important crimes that are going on, like traffic stops that are inappropriate, or the fact that, you know, bothering panhandlers, when, that really seems low on the totem pole compared to all the other issues that you guys have. In fact, I saw in the news just last week that another person got killed in Whitehall. So it is, it is kind of eye-opening, and as I'm, like I said, learning more and more about the city and getting the experience at firsthand, it's just, it is, I am understanding how you guys can get these types of rates and yet focus on other issues. So in any case, one last statistic on that article was that a person has a one in ten chance in Whitehall to be a victim of a crime. So.
Thank you.
Mr. President, may I respond to this in part? I'm sure Chief Siski would like to talk to you about those latest statistics. We determined that that was actually skewed by a private security company who had filed perimisher solicitor private security systems. And what they did is they included all of the big box retailers, anybody who was charged with shoplifting, for example, they included those as crimes against property. And that skewed the number beyond belief, and it was done for marketing purposes. And one example would be, for example, Walmart, which unfortunately takes out the law court docket here in Mayor's Court as well as downtown. So he did an in-depth analysis of that report, and you might benefit by talking to him. We are not doing a lot of crime state in Ohio, and he can provide documentation to the category of us that I just want to share it with you. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else who would like to take advantage of poll public this evening? All right, we'll move on to our standing committee reports. We'll begin with Administration and Financial Management.
Mr. President, Administration and Financial Management, energy statistics, we've discussed the number of drafts and ordinance on file. We will meet again next Tuesday sometime after six thirty.
Thank you, sir. Community engagement, Chairperson Coniston.
Thank you, President Graham. Community engagement met last week. Our ordinance is on file, and we'll meet again next week in the back sometime after six thirty.
All righty, thank you. That brings us to community standards and enforcement. Chairperson Rodriguez, who is unable to attend the meeting this evening. That committee did meet last Tuesday. They did have one piece of legislation on the agenda this evening, I believe under first reading in escape committee right now, so it is second meeting. And they shall also meet again next Tuesday sometime after six thirty. That brings us, next, we have economic development. Chairperson LaCourt.
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic development also met last Tuesday. We did have an executive session that we were in for a few minutes, not a long session, but I'm happy to announce that we are moving forward with the shoe maker requirements will be coming down. So exactly work hard on that, and it looks like we're going to be able to follow through and go ahead and have that taken down there shortly. So other than that, we'll be together sometime after six thirty in the back next week.
All right, thank you. Infrastructure maintenance and services, Chairperson Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. Infrastructure maintenance also met last week. Our ordinance on file, and we'll meet sometime in the back after six thirty next week.
All right, thank you, sir. Public safety, Chairperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public safety also met last week. We discussed ordinance five twenty fifteen, which was the parking in front of Beechwood on the west side of the street there. And we also had a conversation on panhandling. We'll meet sometime, or six thirty next week.
All right, thank you. That brings us to parks and recreation. Chairperson Canner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and recreation met last week. Our ordinance on file. We actually went out with the environmental study of the armory of the water control through the Monday before Thursday before, and we can, we can go back.
All right, thank you, sir. That concludes our standing committee reports. We'll move on to our official reports. The mayor is out of town this week and is unable to attend, and since he's not in town, our enter director of public service is unable to attend this evening, as is the director of development. But we do have our illustrious city attorney, Mr. Michael Shannon. Will this seat, will we begin with him?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of council. I've decided to fight the constitutionality of term limits, so I won't be a candidate for sanctions. I also want to share with you that due to family emergency, I was in South Bend this weekend, and to share your frustration with closing the, actually eighty and ninety, as well as Route Thirty, there was twenty car pileups were everywhere. And New Doggo, too, there was a fifty car pileup. So it extended our stay beyond what we originally planned, but it all turned out well. I have nothing further, council, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Our auditor, Mr. Dan Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no official report tonight other than one that you have before.
All right, thank you, sir. Under official reports to council, we have received the following official reports, all of which are on file in the council office. We have the fire department report of overtime work as of January thirty-one, two thousand and fifteen. We have the auditor's month-to-date-year-to-date revenue report as of January thirty-one, two thousand and fifteen. The auditor's month-to-date-year-to-date expense report as of January thirty-one, two thousand and fifteen. The auditor's month-to-date-year-to-date bank report as of January thirty-one, two thousand and fifteen. We also have the auditor's year-to-date statement of cash position as of January thirty-one, two thousand and fifteen. We also have the treasurer's investment report as of January thirty-one, two thousand and fifteen, along with the treasurer's conreciliation report as of January thirty-one, two thousand and fifteen, and the treasurer's activity by fund report as of January thirty-one, two thousand and fifteen. Those are all the official reports that we have. Under communications and petitions and claims, we have the two items listed on the agenda, and we have received no other additional items since the agenda was published. It's time for a verification of copies. Mr. Turp, please call the hall on whether each member of council has given a copy of each legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting and including any add-on legislation.
LaCourt.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Canner.
Yes.
All righty, we'll move to our ordinances and resolutions for the evening, beginning with our third reading ordinance. And we have ordinance five twenty fifteen. It's amending the traffic code of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, related to the appendix traffic schedule seven entitled Parking Prohibited Certain Hours by amending the prohibition of parking on the north side of Edmond Street between Beechwood Road and Robinwood Avenue and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce the brief adoption of ordinance five twenty fifteen.
Second. A motion by Mr. McHale, and a second by Mr. Canner for the introduction and adoption of ordinance five twenty fifteen. Questions or comments? Mr. Turp, who's called the hall?
LaCourt.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Canner.
Yes.
Ordinance five twenty fifteen has been adopted. Those are all the items under first reading. Under second reading, we begin with ordinance eight twenty fifteen, amending the zoning map attached to chapter one-one-two-two of the nineteen seventy codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and as subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under one-one-two-three-point-one-zero-C-ten to allow Mark Nolan to operate a retail business limited to the sale of used motorcycles and accessory sales on property located at forty-one-oh-six East Main Street owned by Mark Nolan and declaring an emergency. That ordinance is being read by Tyler Holman. Next, we have ordinance nine twenty fifteen. It's approving fund transfers in a total amount of six hundred and six thousand five hundred dollars from various funds to the general fund under the launch. That item is being, that ordinance is being read by Tyler Holman. Next, we have ordinance ten twenty fifteen. It's authorizing the creation of the fiscal year two thousand and fourteen JAG grant fund and account, advancing fifteen thousand four hundred and nine dollars from the county in the law enforcement trust fund to the fiscal year two thousand and fourteen JAG grant fund, making an appropriation of fifteen thousand four hundred and nine dollars from the fiscal year two thousand and fourteen JAG grant fund to the fiscal year JAG, to the fiscal year two thousand and fourteen JAG grant account and declaring an emergency. Somebody, let's do this. You've got to get to our three.
I have an entry for ordinance ten twenty fifteen for suspension of rules.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Gray, thank heaven, for the introduction, or for the adoption, suspension of rules on ordinance ten twenty fifteen. Mr. Turp, who's called the hall?
LaCourt.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Canner.
Yes.
Has that been suspended on ordinance ten twenty fifteen?
I would move to.
Second. Motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Gray for adoption of ordinance ten twenty fifteen. Questions and comments? Mr. Turp, who's called the hall?
LaCourt.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Canner.
Yes.
Ordinance ten twenty fifteen has been adopted. That's the last item we have under second reading. Under first reading, we have ordinance twelve twenty fifteen, making and approving a fund transfer in the amount of one thousand four hundred and forty-one dollars and ninety-eight cents from the fiscal year two thousand and twelve JAG grant fund. That ordinance is being read by Tyler Holman. Next, we have ordinance thirteen twenty fifteen, transferring two hundred and fifty-one thousand two hundred and ninety dollars and twenty-two cents from the bond retirement account to the debt service fund. That ordinance is being read by Tyler Holman. Next, we have ordinance fourteen twenty fifteen, transferring one hundred and twenty-five thousand five hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents from various accounts to the W-I-M-P-I-T-I-E fund, to the debt service fund. Is that the name of that, Mr. President? Yeah, it's a question, I can't pronounce it. Wimpy or something. Wimpy, I don't know. You know, when people are going to put an acronym down for something, or whatever it is you call that, it should actually be a word, not just some gibber-dabber. All right, moving on, we have ordinance fifteen twenty fifteen. It's making and approving a fund transfer in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars from the transfer expense account to the street maintenance and repair fund. That ordinance is being read by Tyler Holman. Next is ordinance sixteen twenty fifteen. It's authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the purchase of real estate located at one-one-five Shoemaker Lane, Whitehall, Ohio, parcel number zero-nine-zero-zero-zero six-one-four-zero-zero-zero, and declaring an emergency. That ordinance is being read by Tyler Holman. Next, ordinance is ordinance eighteen twenty fifteen, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to grant a right-of-way easement of city property for the Whitehall Signal Improvements Project and declaring an emergency. That ordinance is being read by Tyler Holman. Those are all the ordinances. We do have one resolution this evening under first reading is resolution number five twenty fifteen, declaring the necessity of the appropriation of real property and declaring an emergency. That resolution is being read by Tyler Holman. Those are all the ordinances and resolutions we have before this evening. We'll move on to our second opportunity for poll public, and subjects covered by a participant of the first poll public are not permitted in the second poll public. Please come forward, state your name and address, and we'll read.
Don Sarubi, same address before. I, two more issues. I'm a little concerned with the city of Whitehall's open records request situation. There doesn't seem to be too much transparency, accountability, and reliability. You know, in, with the transparency, it's government's obligation to share information with the citizen. This is the heart of how citizens hold their public officials accountable. Well, the last two, three, actually four weeks, trying to get records and stuff about issues from panhandling to law enforcement, I've really gave Gal here a poor headache because, you know, there doesn't seem to be a set system. You don't have a custodian of records and a lot of other issues going on, and people calling in sick, or people hurting, breaking their legs. I mean, it seems like one little thing happens and everything else goes by the wayside. That's why a lot of times cities do have, you know, special departments that handle this type of administrative work. Also, you know, in speaking with one of the assistant attorneys the other day, he insinuated that one of my requests would cost dearly because he will, he'll force me to pay prepay for records that should have been in the first request at no charge. And it's more of just a report and not, but he's talking about the time it takes to get that report done. He's going to charge and bill me by the hours of the person who's doing the report, which I find ridiculous because that report is also part of your standard reporting to the state, especially for funding and grants from, like, the Justice Department and so forth. So that's my first issue. My second issue is really directed to the safety director here, Larry Morrison, right? Or? Safety committee. I saw that. But you work with them on the safety committee?
I am the chairman of the safety committee.
Okay. I have, there is no standard guideline within the city of Whitehall Police about equipment malfunctioning and not being, working properly. I had instances where I tried to request dashboard camera for incident, and of course, almost all the vehicles that were in service that day worked just fine, but the one vehicle that actually was needed, the dashboard cam, it mysteriously does not exist. But yet, you guys have this sophisticated equipment that I have worked with firsthand, not knowing what kind of brand you have, but the type of equipment, and it should work flawlessly. But the excuses I got was that either hard drive full, or there's malfunction in the computer. But of course, if this has been going on for quite a while, I find that as a big safety issue concerning recent events like Ferguson and New York, you definitely want to protect yourself, you know, from the public with recording these incidents. But if certain incidents don't get recorded, or the recordings either get lost or destroyed, or it doesn't exist, it really defeats the purpose of putting that equipment in there in the first place. And there is no standard guidelines, according to one of the administrative sergeants I've spoke with. And I think there should be. So if one of your officers's motor vest wasn't functioning right, or had had issues with it, you wouldn't send him out on patrol without it, would you? You would find some way to make sure he was safe. I look at the cameras, the vehicles, and all the other tools that he has in his possession as a safety issue, and if they're not functioning, he shouldn't be on the street, or she shouldn't be on the street.
So what, I'm kind of, I'm kind of lost. I'm not for sure what, why you're asking for dashboard.
Well, to be candid, to be candid, after last week's city council meeting, someone spoke from this meeting, someone spoke with an officer to have my vehicle watched in the lot. They watched my vehicle for forty minutes, and then as I left this facility, I was followed by the police for two vials, by your officer, whose dashboard camera doesn't work. And after trying to convince me that I was speeding, which I knew I was not because I knew he was following me from the moment I left this city hall, he then proceeded to come back and said he would write me for a different ticket, and he wrote me for improper left turn, which he has no video footage of. And that is why I was requesting the video camera footage. And also, and then he kept threatening me with more charges that he'll write up if I don't leave, including the speeding. And I politely said to him that if you could write me up for speeding, you would have, but you can't, and that's why you haven't. So this is, this is the harassment that I feel is going on just for bringing up my panhandling issues, which is a true violation of my civil rights of the First Amendment of free speech. You know, I'm here being very polite, being very cordial, bringing you guys articles, trying to state my point in different angles. I've never been disrespectful to any single one of you guys. And, and yet, after last week's meeting, which I thought I was getting through to some of you guys, and it sounded like you guys have already discussed the issue that I was trying to get through, all of a sudden, I have, it seemed like something escalated and, you know, and I was harassed by the one officer, plus.
So you were cited a ticket.
I was cited a ticket. I was cited a ticket for improper left-hand turn on Yerling and Main Street. But of course, I wasn't pulled over until almost getting outside of your jurisdiction at Hamilton and the Speedway over there. So, but like I said, I was cited by an officer who has a history of disobeying regulations and your department's policies. I read it in his disciplinary jacket, and it looks like he was warned twice for finding crime outside of your Whitehall's jurisdiction, which once again brought me to my first article when I first spoke in the first poll public about why there's high crime, is because some of your officers are, really have their own agenda.
Yeah, about ten seconds.
So.
Who's the officer you spoke to about the?
The sergeant, it was Dan Kelso, Sergeant Dan Kelso. He's been very helpful and very, you know, we've had some really deep conversations. Like I said, I've worked with a lot of these different systems, being in public service myself for a long time. And I just, you know, it's one of those things where I just feel that that's something that you need to have a better guideline of to protect not only you guys, but the public.
And have you spoken to Mr. Underwood?
No, I was hoping to speak with.
Did you just try to figure out what you thought?
No, I was, I was hoping to speak with Mr. Underwood, and I was hoping also to file internal affairs complaint with the Chief Siski about the incident. But at the moment, like I said, this is just kind of been unfolding, and I ended up in arraignment court today to plead not guilty to my ticket, which was, like I said, a bogus thing. So. I, I appreciate the time you let me speak again. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time?
Mr. President, just, my office is responsible for complying with public records request. It does rely on multiple people providing information to us. As I indicated, I was here, we talked with Brad, and I urge you to continue to talk with our offices, the public police, and we can address any major concerns that you have. And the other matter, obviously, as we indicated, was bringing the community court today. So glad to have the process, take care of what happens there. Thank you.
Just one quick response. The one issue I have with the open records request is that the person I'm requesting emails and stuff from about is the person providing the records back to the attorney's office. I find that as conflict of interest because, you know, it's like, if I want information about your emails, Miss Coniston, and I feel like you're doing something wrong, or there's some issue that I need to address, well, if it's about you, and you're responsible for providing those records to the attorney's office to get to me, how do I have the assurance and the accountability that you are getting me all of your records? You know, and it's not just, it's not a technical guy, it's not a third-party department doing it, it's that person, and that's, that's the issue I had, and that's the issue I brought up with Brad, who didn't seem to think it was an issue. So.
Okay, you can continue to follow up with him, man, or myself personally, and we can try to rectify your concerns and take into account our public policy, which we do have here. We have a public records commission, and we will state all in that regard, so if there's been a discrepancy, we'll try to address it, so that you can give your deserved.
Okay, thank you.
All right. The community debate board. All right. Community Day, board.
Good evening. How, I've got, thanks. We've got a very busy spring coming up. Just to remind you all that, uh, Tuesday, March third is the city's address. So, I think we have you all here right before your meeting. Um, and then I will let Karen talk about Easter. But, um, on, uh, on Saturday, March twenty-first, we are going to have a community garden prep day from ten to one. Very excited. Our local Lowe's store has decided to donate all materials to create all raised beds, which will really help with the spread of needs as well as accessibility issues for, for some of our population to be able to work in our community gardens. So, we will be building those beds all together, um, from ten to one on Saturday, March twenty-first. Hopefully, do whatever, period of, maybe a week or so. Um, and then I also wanted to say, um, they, I did forgot from the library today, um, the official grand opening day is April eleventh, Saturday, April eleventh. Um, so, that, um, their downtown let me know about that today. Uh, April nineteenth is the WCPA-A-A-A, it's forgetting gender.
It will be down.
It will be at the senior center this year, um, from twelve to five. And, um, then we've got our spring cleanup coming up on, on April twenty-fourth, which is a Friday. We will be having electronics recycling here, Touch, um, MCS Touch, which has come and talked with us in the past. They're going to be here with a truck and they're going to be taking, um, any electronics, any exit cords you have. Um, I know as a city, we've got some old stuff that, um, has been taken out of inventory that will be recycled. So, um, share it out with your, your friends and neighbors to help clean up. And then, uh, the following day is our annual, uh, park.
Who else has anything?
Excellent. On March twenty-eighth is the annual Easter egg hunt, um, over at John Bishop Park at ten o'clock. Please be there on time because it generally is over at ten oh-three. Um, Easter egg stuffing will be done this year on March eleventh over at the Whitehall Administration Building. And I'm certain that they're going to probably reach out and have some people come help them. I believe it will be during the day. Um, Whitehall City Schools, oh, okay, administration.
Superdome.
Yeah, public superdome. So, I think that'd be a great place to put all those eggs.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should talk with them. Um, but no, I think that, uh, y'all have everything covered.
Who else has anything to say? All right. We'll move on to poll council. We'll begin with poll.
Thank you. Um, I certainly don't have any, um, comments this evening. I do apologize for not being here two weeks ago, but, uh, had the work, so, um, definitely, uh, I just wanted to know that I didn't want to go ahead and contact, uh, please, uh, chief tomorrow on, uh, some of the information you gave us tonight. Just follow along that, okay? And then I don't have any comments this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Force?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, thank everybody for coming out in this nasty weather and hope to see you again next two weeks.
Mr. Bailey?
Thank you, Mr. President. Also, I would thank all of you for coming out and keep warm and, uh, next week or so, still that weather. Drive safe. That's all I have.
Mr. Gray?
Just want to say thank you for coming, you know, stay warm.
Thank you, President Graham. I'd like to thank everybody for coming. Um, I have to be back from Chicago. I was talking with them today and who could send me back. Glad to have you here, not there.
Mr. Canner?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank you everybody for coming. And that's all I have.
All right. I also want to thank everyone for coming out here this evening. It's cold out there and, uh, it takes a lot to do now, but have sometimes in a weather like this. So, we appreciate you being here. We had no other official visits before us this evening. So.
One thing. I've been watching basketball team, uh, well, they're pretty good. I'm getting Mr. Gray.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ford, check him out.
Second. Uh, motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Canner for adjournment. Sir, please call the hall.
LaCourt?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Canner?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Hope to see you in our next meeting.